Still continuing to do the approval of the agenda.
On the motion to court.
Of approval and support of their say aye. I don't know what is opposed, say no. The approval of the agenda. Of announcements of court finding. Citizens comments on topic not on the agenda. Okay, I'm going to summarize the public hearing procedures to be followed so we can read this at the public hearing. Public hearings are scheduled to provide specific opportunity for citizens to be heard on zoning matters that may affect their interest. Every interested person will be given the opportunity to be heard. The planning commission will strive to conduct a public hearing in a consistent and orderly fashion. The commission would like to make it clear that it is bound by rules and laws and that there are the determines which wing cases. In order to conduct the hearing within a reasonable time and to keep to the subject at hand, you are asked to observe the following rules and procedures. The chairperson will announce the subject of the public hearing, as advertised, and will summarize public hearing procedures. Staff will make brief presentation to explain the substance of the application, give any prepared staff reports, and to note any previous actions taken on the issue. The applicant will state its full case. Full inferers the planning commission with pertinent information concerning the property, letters, maps, and other papers previously submitted to the zoning department will have been distributed to the planning commission members prior to the meeting for the review. Persons in attendance who favor their proposed request will be heard first; those opposed will be heard next. Individuals wishing to speak should shall be recognized by the chairperson. Each person making the statement will be asked to state their name for the record. Please refrain from repeating what has been said here for you. Please do not involve personalities. Be as factual as possible. The planning commission deserves the right to question any speaker. All statements or questions must be directed to the chairperson. The planning commission shall refrain from debating with persons commenting. The function of the hearing is to gather facts and information, not to carry on adverse relationship. Once all pertinent information is heard, the public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed and returned to regular session. The commission then deliberate on the matter. All deliberations must be conducted before an open and public assembly. Any decision reached shall be arrived as though the offering of the official motion, support, and majority vote of the planning commission. Public hearing revisited. File number Z14724. Dennis Kelly Miller, 1420 Nellton Road, Gladron, Michigan, 48624. Gladron Township, Section 26, 1420 Nellton Road, Gladron. Northwest one quarter of the northeast one quarter excluding the north, 208.75 foot of the west, 417.5 foot thereof. Property owners are requesting a special use permit to allow mud logging activities on their property located at 1420 North Nellton Road, Gladron. Okay. We're going to move to regular meeting?
No, public hearing.
Public hearing.
Maybe I could, let me just say something.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm Doug Jacobson, the county attorney. We're essentially continuing a process that we were at roughly eight weeks ago. We had a public hearing and did not have a full membership of the planning commission present. Mr. Carl had been ill for some period of time and had really not been participating in any of his county position because of his illness. Since then, the county board has had Mr. Virgil take the spot that would be the commission representative on the planning commission, so you have a full board. We had testimony in the public hearing at that time when the planning commission took the vote at that time and ended up basically did not decide really whether they had a tie. The planning commission indicated through various ways and phrase that they really wanted to make a final decision when they had all seven, so you wouldn't have the three pre-situation. And so further action was needed to further until a subsequent time. As a matter of procedural caution, the staff, which would be Justin, for example, and Kim, re-nosed the hearing and put it in publication, and so anybody would be aware that there would be some further proceedings on it. So you've already had a great deal of information presented on this. You're probably aware, if you just read the newspaper, that there's some litigation going on. This may or may not be the result of that litigation. The, as far as the staff position, and Justin, you just raised your hand a little bit on the speaking, the staff position hand. The district that the Millers are in is what is commonly called RF. And in the RF category, there's no particular discussion of something like mud logging, but there is no discussion of a lot of things. And so part of the zoning process is to interpret and look at the zoning ordinance and how it fits a particular use. For example, a go-kart track, there'd never be anything in there, and there would be places you could run a go-kart track in the business. But from the staff viewpoint, in the RF district, there's a provision that deals with special use permits allowing, I think the phrase is festival and fair. Festivals and fairs, we're doing as when you have a group that comes together for a short time for some event. It could be a music festival, it could be church choirs getting together, could be all sorts of things. And so we figure in the staff view that a mud log activity would be akin to what is called a festival and fair. And in that area of festivals and fairs with special use permits, the planning commission could allow those to occur. And a special use permit would also have, would have limitations. One of the limitations that pretty much is there because of the ordinance is non-commercial, okay, in the sense of it cannot be your business. That would not work, but a festival and fair of a non-commercial nature would something that would be allowable. And the Millers had asked to have that activity, but I think in the prior meeting, they indicated that they recognized that there were limitations on that, there was not the every day, all day types of things, and various of those were discussed. So as a matter of zoning principles, within the discretion of the planning commission, they can grant special use permits, they can deny special use permits. If they grant a special use permit, conditions can be put upon the permit. And then a permitted use with conditions then puts the county, the staff, in the position of saying, you know, you have the event and you don't follow the special use permit, well we're going to revoke the rule that had those against them. It's a simple, you know, take two second kind of, there's nothing in government that's quite that simple. But if you don't follow the special use permit, then you are no longer having a valid activity. And for example, one of us examples of that that are around, but I don't need to go into those, if you had permission to build a church, for example, it's a special use, and it was converted to being a church, instead of being a rock concert hall, you might have a problem because a church and a rock concert hall are substantially different types of activities. And so that would be an example of that. So I think the planning commission can on its own, you know, recognize all deposits that were made before, okay? I think Don, you've had a chance to kind of review the file. I believe, okay, so Don's familiar, I believe, a lot of the materials that were submitted by individuals. I think it would be a fair thing to allow anyone who is here who wants to speak somewhat more to the issue, you know, to do that, and hopefully not reiterate everything that was discussed before. And then the planning commission at that point would be in a position to make a decision. I'm going to ask Mr. Gilbert, who I think wants to speak, and if you could perhaps, and I may at some point chime in, but I think you have made some notes about the types of things that were being talked about as the restrictions. We had some restrictions on a number of them. On the notice, the number of participants who would be showing up, some rules regarding parking, although those take the cooperation of road commission, since the road commission controls colored roads, some hours, some buffering of neighbors, a couple of health considerations with porta potty kind of situations in camping. And so we had a number of restrictions that were being talked about, that the Millers had proposed. To be honest, it had been ongoing discussion for the last year and a half that Mr. Snyder and I had had with Mr. Gilbert, the attorney. And some of these things, Mr. Snyder and I feel comfortable saying, we think we've given a package here of things that certainly would of the planning commission considered. And we guys decided, we're not in a place to do that, but we tried to sort out where we saw some hot buttons were, to come up with a package that would kind of balance private rights and public rights and try to do some balancing on that. But eventually, the planning commission made the decision. David, have I said anything I have said of relatively fair statement?
Yep.
Okay. So again, if you don't mind, I'll ask Mr. Gilbert to kind of summarize, and then other people might want to, if that's okay with you.
Thank you.
Hi. For the record, I'm attorney David Gilbert. I'm helping the Millers on this issue, and I'm not going to go through everything we did before. I guess I just want to kind of sum it up a little bit. What we're doing is exactly what Mr. Jacobson said, is balancing property owners' rights to do what they want versus the impact it has on the community. And the way it's phrased on here is accurate, special use permit to allow mud logging activities, I would say maybe more events, because the Millers can certainly go out on an individual basis and mud log 24 hours a day, every day out there. So as far as whether we want to happen in as a neighbor or not, it's going to happen. What we're looking at, though, is their, what I would say is events. And what we've tried to do is define an event, how often they can occur, and when they do occur, the parameters that they have to be conducted with. So it's not a question of if they can mud log, because they certainly can, but it's at what point does it become an event, and then how many times per year can we have an event? Getting back to the go-kart analogy, he can build a track out there, and he can run the go-karts 24 hours a day, seven days a week if he wanted. He can't do this commercial venture, and he can't do the mud logging commercial venture either. But we acknowledge at some point, you know, this is an event. And what we're looking at, and this is, you know, guidance from the county, what the Millers think is reasonable, what everybody that's been behind the scenes, seems, believes is reasonable, you know, let's define it, let's give it, you know, define what it is, and then what parameters we're going to operate under. And what the Millers have agreed to, I think, is fair. I know not everybody wants this activity period going on next door, but I kind of think back to, it's not a very good analogy, but if I had a pig farm, there's no question I can do that, but does the neighbor really want to do whatever, because the owners, you know, they go around, well, there's not much you can do about it. It's not a pig farm, you know, so we don't have an absolute right to do whatever we want, whenever we want. So the question, I guess, is, is the board, I guess, going to look at this and take an opportunity to start defining some parameters that everybody else will be able to work off without infringing on the property owner's rights, you know, as way against the community? You know, this, we can't have mud logs out there 50, 60 vehicles every day, seven hours and seven days a week. That to me just doesn't seem reasonable. But I think what the application is outlining, and if you need the specifics on what the parameters are, then I think it's in the application. We made one adjustment to it, I think we reduced it by the number of events. And I actually think that last meeting we included Mr. Jacobson's. That's what I was getting at. There were some adjustments to it, but, so I don't know if the paperwork you have for you is exactly, again, I don't have your file, but it was, we've got, what defines it, you know, what is considered a, once we reach that threshold, how often can we do it, and what are the parameters within that? Like Doug mentioned, you know, we've got to address certain concerns, we have to be in compliance with the state IRS rules, things like that. And whether or not it's an event, we still have to be, you know, compliant with all the other state laws. So this isn't an issue, or this isn't an activity that's banned. We can do it, anybody can do it, it's just an opportunity to define it, say this is what it is, and this is how we're going to regulate it. And if you're not happy with one of the regulations, or you're thinking something different, I guess you could talk about that. And I don't want to come across as being overly aggressive. You can do it, it's just when does it become an event, and what parameters do you want to put on it? And again, I think what they've already outlined is fair, I think it will involve a whole lot of issues. I'm not going to stand up here and say, if you do this, we're going to do that. It's not worth hoping to get resolved, and I think this should resolve. If it doesn't, the case goes forward and the court decides what's an event, the parameters. So the advantage is you can take control over it, or let the judge take control over it, I guess, that's the difference. So I'm available for any questions. I don't want to rehash what we said before. I think the majority of people were here except for Mr. Virgil, and I believe that he's probably done through everything and has been brought up to speed. So unless there's any questions, I'm going to sit down.
One of my concerns is 700 vehicles, you don't have that many at the county fair.
Well, what we're looking at is for one person, you could have a tow vehicle, the participant's vehicle, the trailer, and some kind of camper. So you could have five vehicles for one person. I mean, it just, it, so what we're looking at is, yeah, not everybody who's going to show up is going to show up with five vehicles, and everybody who's showing up is not necessarily a participant, they could just be a straight out spectator. And is this a scientific method we used to come up with these numbers? We had to start somewhere, and when we started adding things up, that's kind of what we were looking at. So 500 vehicles could be, I think we're restricted in the number of participants, though, really, it's a little astounding, aren't we? No? That was kind of respect how many people can participate. There were two instances, I think, in the past that Millers don't want to see happen again. That's not going to happen, but because they did, we got the attention, and the county is saying, hmm, we don't want it to happen again, we don't want other people to do this. And it's not just the Millers, but if you sit down and say, this is what we did here, it's a big issue of parameters, if somebody comes back and wants to do the go-kart track. And it's a good answer, I mean, it's, you know.
Mrs. Smith, would you like me to review what was in the application in the letter? That was sort of my letter, if you incorporated?
Yes, please.
The, the application indicated that all the activities would be confined to their property, that the hours of operation would be from 10:00 a.m. but would cease when it was dusk by the DNR tables. It was a child, or hunter, I guess you know, what Charlie talking about for the DNR for dust. That, as modified by the letter, that there would be up to nine events in a 24-month period. And so you're not going to have it every weekend. That the number of vehicles would be no more than 700, although I know that's the topic that has been some discussion on, this was in the paperwork. That it would be a non-commercial, and non-commercial would be that there'd be some recognizable tax-exempt organization that grows scouts or the church or the shelter house or whatever involved in the event, and that they would have an accounting of any revenues and expenses to that organization. So it wasn't, for example, Mrs. Miller saying, my best friend had a fire, and we're going to do something to make money for my best friend because she had a fire, it would be going to an organization. That there would be a scheduling of events to the zoning department at least 30 days in advance. And so, for example, neighbors like Mr. and Mrs. Sparkman would have you like to know that two weekends from now there'd be something, so it wouldn't be something that would be topped on them. That there wasn't going to be camping in the property, inadequate sanitation such as porta potties for the attendees. If the Millers wanted to try to jump through all the hoops to get a campground license, that would be a totally separate application to you folks for something like a campground license would be beyond. That there would be no parking on the surrounding roads, that park had to be in cooperation with the road commission, because they're the only ones who really have the legal authority to close a road, but if they did close it for parking, that the Millers would be responsible to put the signs up and take the signs down. That with respect to the neighbors, there's currently a berm. When I spoke to them at some prior point, they said they really didn't like the berm being any bigger than it was. Theoretically, I guess, a property owner could build a berm if they wanted, but in this case, there wouldn't be any additional berm built, but there'd be plantings put in. And my suggestion would be, on a good day, that you plant 1,000 little pine trees that you buy from the DNR, the soil conservation, in about five years, you've got 500 new trees, okay? That the zoning department would be able to inspect and go out and verify things, so there wouldn't be any issue about that. And this is dealing with large-scale activities. If they had no more than 10 mud log vehicles, except their own personal things on their property, we wouldn't consider that that would be an event. So again, having your friends come, it wouldn't be an unlimited number of friends, you'd put a limit in, and that wouldn't be done on a commercial basis where you're suddenly my friend for $50, okay? My friend, my friend, my guest, my guest, but not my friend, only if you pay me money. And so those were the supplements that went along with the application as it was typed up and presented to you. And doing some, again, time that Justin and I spent with Mr. Gilbert and at different times with the Millers, tried to put together a package that we felt could be at least a reasonable package. Nothing perfect in life, but a reasonable package. Justin, have I said anything in a fair fashion?
I believe so. I just want to clarify one point, that if the event is for a charitable kind of factor, then it has to be for a recognized, because some of the past events have been for people that have been burnt out, and they've had other people come to them for requests.
And those are all worthy things, by the way. For example, if the Methodist church here in Gladron said, we're going to do the event and we're going to use the money for Mrs. Jones' fire, that's fine.
Right. What we're trying to limit it to is that we just can't have an event and say, this is for this family who got burned out. It has to be, which wouldn't be legitimate, but it has to have more than the appearance of legitimacy. It's got to be sponsored through a recognized, you know, charity somehow or another, because they have in the past said, well, let's just hold a charitable event for this family, they did it, gave them money. And now there's a question of, well, wait a minute, is that a commercial in nature or not? So what Doug suggested was, we'll just do it through a charitable organization, and that, you know, then it falls on them, we don't have to worry about it, and plus...
Because they'd have to keep some monitoring.
Yeah, they would, yeah, so their guilt would be cited. So it's not that the only type of event would be charitable, it's they could have whatever they wanted, but if there were money being exchanged, it must be for a charitable cause, and it must have some type of sponsor. So that's, and we can't sit here and predict every single contingency, but that's the purpose behind the fact section of it. And we had to have a start time and time.
It's one of the things that the neighbors used to say, sometimes, some nights it went on long time, now we...
Right.
... report the concern. And Mrs. Smith, I don't know if anyone else wants to make any comments or not, sort of thing.
Spoh, do you have any question?
I'd like to take the opportunity to take this board back to the point where we tabled the meeting. And at that time, we had conducted a vote, and it was a tie vote. I've done some research in Robert's Rules and different things, and talked to a lot of county people, and they say, any meeting that they've ever been in, when there's a tie vote, it means whatever proposed has failed. And I go back to our zoning ordinance, and the only place I can find anything on it is under zoning board of appeals. I will, it's on page 134, if anybody wants to look. It says, majority vote. The concurring vote of a majority of the membership of the board of appeal shall be necessary to decide upon, decide upon an issue brought before the board. For example, if three members are present out of a total of five members, all three must concur to pass the motion. And we had a seven-person board, we had one person that wasn't here. So out of the six remaining, we'd have to have four votes in favor for it to pass. So my statement is, we had to vote, the vote failed. And I think that should be the end of the situation.
I will not say that I'm an expert on parliamentary procedure. In fact, I think there are few experts around, because the actual Robert's Rules of Order is a book that's really, really thick, okay? But I've, I've studied this to the extent that I'm a chairman of a different board that's a small board, and I've been to meetings that have been conducted by the Association of similar kind of boards. And two things have been pointed out to me by some people that really probably know what they're talking about, although they may, they may misquote them, pardon me. One is that with a small board, and you guys, it's called a small board, the board makes the rules, okay? And so if the board is comfortable saying, here's how we're going to proceed, basically they do that. Most of Robert's Rules is designed to manage, I say like Congress, big groups where you have, you know, if you have too many people talking, nothing is done here, everybody gets a chance to chime in. And also, small boards are allowed to be somewhat informal about how they handle things. And so as a general principle, yeah, Robert's Rules are fine, and there's other varieties. There's, future farmers have a set of rules, for example, it's sort of similar to it. But when you have a small board, if the members say, well, this is an account, we're going to proceed, it allows everybody to voice their opinion, and we try to make a reasoned deliberation and decision, you probably aren't wrong. It's that you can't do it, it's not that you can't do it differently, but if the board says, well, I think, you know, we're the ones who decide what the rules are, which you decide your own rules internally, nobody imposes it on you, so it's what's the board's pleasure on most of these things. So, for example, in the board I'm on, we don't have seconds, and there are times that we don't formally vote. But if I look down on the table on something and they're all saying, yup, 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 we put it in the minutes that we all said, yup, 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 and then the motion passed. You know, we don't take a rule called a vote on a lot of things, because, again, we have seven members, we can figure what the seven people are saying really easily. So I just say what you're saying, and in a large group, more formal rules probably are more important than a small group.
But in this case, it was a rule called vote, the rule called, it was public record.
Oh, it tied, it tied, and so you really ended up nowhere.
I agree. We had a quorum, we had an official meeting, we had a vote, the motion failed. We should not have taken the issue.
There was a subsequent motion after that, where the board voted the tables, and told the future reading, too, which the board voted on and upheld that, so...
Dick, you tabled that, somebody stucked that, and it passed. If she, if Marcia would've said tie vote, the motion fails, then it would've been over. You guys didn't choose to do that, you chose to recess and bring it back to this meeting.
I agree with Richard, I think we had a vote that passed.
It was a tie vote, and it meant that it failed. I think you may have made a comment.
I've never been on a board or a meeting with a chair vote only to break a tie.
Well, it wasn't a tie.
Until the chair voted.
When the chair voted, it made it a tie.
Yeah. Didn't vote to break a tie, voted to make a tie.
Right. It depends on the rules. In your situation, the chair is a member no differently than everybody else and can vote on every item.
Well, also, is that on the zoning board of appeals?
No, well...
And as a member of that, well, I'm the chairman of that board.
And you can vote.
And I do vote.
You can vote, right.
Every time we have a vote, I do vote.
It is a misconception...
As far as Marcia's right to vote, I will support her right to make that vote.
There are very limited situations where the chair only votes in case of a tie. The typical one that you would be familiar with would be in probably in the city of Beaverton and the city of Gladwin. The mayors would normally not vote unless there's a tie. Only the council members vote, but, you know, the county board of commissioners, the chairman votes like anybody else. Here, the chairman votes. In fact, Marcia, even though she refrained from it, she probably could make a motion if she wanted to. Most chairmen don't, but she probably could if she wanted to. So, you know, her vote is actually probably proper to do in all cases as opposed to waiting for a tie, because she's as much of a member as anybody else. But I tend to agree with Mr. Gilbert that the board decided to go ahead and keep it open, and so it'd be best to make a decision and move on. And with seven, you're not gonna end up with a tie unless somebody really waffles, and then how are we gonna do that?
Do you have any comments?
I would like to have a ruling on my statement.
On your statement, okay. We're ruling to accept a tie as a no vote.
Can we vote? Maybe we table this.
For more information.
Who do you want this ruling from, Dick?
I guess from the board.
Well, is it a motion we're gonna vote on?
You've already, in a way, you've already done that. The board moved to bring it back, and so I think we're doing what the board asked us to do.
The only thing the board ruled on, we put it in, we tabled it.
Well, then, that's another word saying, "Bring it back again, bring it back up."
And that's why I wanted to take us back to that point where we tabled it, was right after the vote went.
I suggest that you just go ahead, vote same way, vote different way, and then you can get four and three, or three and four, or whatever you're gonna get, and hopefully, don't make a statements.
Anybody else have any other questions?
What you're saying, Doug, is that once it's tabled, it can't be untabled.
Well, that's what you're doing, you've brought it back, that's...
You need to re-ask him.
That's why we re-noticed it and made sure everybody had a chance to come back, because it was coming back to you. From the staff, and we think we're doing what the board was telling us to do, to have it brought back and let you guys make a four to three, three to four vote.
And the procedure isn't unusual either. I've been on boards and school boards, and when we get onto the school board issues, we tend to follow Robert's Rules. But there are still times where you need, from the practical side, to go around some of the rules or force some of the rules. And like Doug said, you're a small group, nobody here, well, maybe there are, you know, official professional board members, it's a small community organization, you have authority, you have to follow some rules. As long as you're not doing it specifically one way for somebody over here and doing it totally different than over here, there's really no problem. And like I said before, you did it so that you took a vote. Nobody cleared it past or failed. There was a motion made to table it until, I can't remember exactly what the parameters were, you had the seventh person, now you've got the seventh person, so that's where you left it off, is basically, you can either recast, I hope, or you can get one more vote, and that's it.
I was the one that made the motion, and as stated in the minutes, the motion was made by Member Christie to table the meeting until the next scheduled meeting and to have this meeting in recess. Supported by Mr. Killian and all eight. There was no stipulations on why it was tabled.
No, it doesn't, yeah, it was tabled, and here we are. You know, if you wanna cut to the chase, it was tabled, and here we are. And you have seven people present.
So are we gonna pursue what Dick was suggesting, or is that not a solution, brother?
I know it wasn't stated in there either, but the discussion was to have the seventh person here. That's why we tabled it, so we can break the tie. More information, I guess. That was my impression of it, we don't vote for that.
I mean, that's what, I mean, I supported the motion because I thought that's what we were doing. I mean, maybe I comprehend.
There was some discussion, yes, right.
We discussed, we discussed, it was a tie, what do we do? We discussed, does it automatically fail? And ultimately, we decided, well, let's table it, we get the seventh person here and go from there.
So by tabling, at that point, we nullified the vote that was taken and reopened discussion.
No.
Well, I think what you did, whether it's nullified or not, you said, "This doesn't resolve it. Let's have seven, so we have a decision of a majority one way or the other."
So if that vote is not nullified, where is it?
Well, I guess in your memory, you can remember if you voted yes or voted no.
I mean, I think if we would've had these rules established, what you're bringing up, for the four of us would've happened, we would've ended up right, you know, we'd have said, "The vote means..."
What I read on the zoning ordinance came out of the zoning board of appeals.
The D B A portion.
Right.
I mean, we should be about the same, but I mean, I understand.
Two different boards.
Right.
It is two different boards. And we know the zoning board of appeals has a set of bylaws, and I don't think this board does that I've ever seen happen.
I think they do have bylaws, I think, you don't have a book like this on the board of appeals.
Right.
That's maybe something that should be pursued in the future.
Well, I agree.
Well, of course, the reality is, how often has the board even had a no vote in anything? Most of the time, most boards act unanimously.
Well, normally, if you have a full board, I mean, it's gonna be a sit.
But half a month, it could happen, anything's happening.
Exactly. You're right, you're very right. So again, my suggestion would be, take a vote, you don't have to. And Mr. Burgl, who's been here is...
So we're back at the point where you ask for comments in favor?
In favor of, yes.
And let them have their say, and then ask for comments opposed.
Do we have anybody that has in favor of this being passed?
This would be an addition to what was ever said before.
Yes. Anybody that is opposed that was not stated before?
I'm still opposed, as we were asking for, but I have a few, just a question for you. This board is appointed by the commissioners, correct? Do you act for the people, or do you act for yourselves in their voting? This may be kind of off, but I'm just, I'm curious about that.
Well, not really elected, so I mean, I guess technically, for the people, I mean, I don't know how, you know, commissioners are elected.
Exactly, and you're not.
Being itself for his township, right.
Right, and you're appointed. But who do you represent, yourself, or in this case...
My thought would be they're representing the ordinance, the zoning ordinance.
Represent the ordinance and the interest of the county.
Well, I think we'd have to go right along with, we should be representing the people of the county also.
Yes, the interest of the county people.
Right.
Majority interest of people.
Then to go along with that, Jason, there were so many letters sent out with the applications in, I had it in my file. And I was wondering, it seemed like there was mentioned last time eleven, and I wondered how many came back. I thought most of them came back, and that did. And in your voting, do you vote according to what the mayors in this situation would like? Or feel what their feelings are, or do we have no say in it? The letters that were written, we particularly didn't write letters, we called, we're here voicing our opinion. But I'm just wondering if, you know, if you're representing the people that are closely involved in this particular situation or any particular situation.
I'll leave you answer that for the county. The answer to that is that the law requires that individual notice be taken, be given to people in a certain area, because those are people who may be especially affected by a decision. All of those people could write a letter saying, "We want this to happen," and the planning commission could say, "No." All of those people could say, "We do not want this to happen," and the planning commission could say, "Yes." So their opinions are sought and considered, but they do not veto, they don't veto a decision because their vote makes the decision, I guarantee that it will pass. And so I guess the answer is to make sure that there's an opportunity for them to give an opinion, even if they don't show up in writing. And if I go a step further, and I'm not trying to make this into a long lecture, when the planning commission makes a decision, I think the kind of look out for the county as a whole is true, and for the taxpayers as a whole, the property holders. And that would be, for example, you're a property owner, and we have the next door, and others are property owners, too. And so it's balancing quite often factors. I wish that there was a perfect scale that you could put little things on and it balances out, but they try to look the best balance they can.
I would just add that, in part, the guy by the oak of office, they took, and that way, he's not official, he's a couple of views, so you knew what it was. And that's their guy, when they say, "I'm gonna do this job," that oak of office is the parameters that they as members operate by.
Follow the law of the state.
Right, and uphold the laws that, you know, the state of Michigan and the Constitution of the United States.
The other thing I had to say was, I would like to know how they're going to control this seven hundred vehicles in the area. Are they gonna stand at the entrance and count vehicles as they're coming in? And the other situation is, I don't think these people, and I don't want this to sound negative, I mean, it doesn't matter who it was, but can be trusted because the very next week after that last meeting was held, they had another one.
I think if their attorney's point of note goes, there's not a law that says they can't, you know? There's not a law, they can't have a mud log. I think that's what we're all here trying to resolve. Is my, I mean, I guess that's my understanding, but am I wrong?
No, they can do it, it's just what parameters, the more you reach a threshold, what parameters do we go under?
That's one reason the provision is there, that basically, we're topping out, if I remember, it was a ten, but really, the number, that it was not gonna get bigger than for what we call casual use. So either you're gonna be relatively small, or you're gonna be one of your nine events in that two-year period.
I, and what the motors, for a person being able to do with their property what they want. But when it spills over onto the neighbors, and they affect the neighbors and the neighborhood, that's the reason we have a zone. And what I see, what I'm sitting here seeing, either this county has one in or they don't. That's what I see.
Yeah, this spill over effect, I mean, that's a common thing, but Mr. Gilbert used the example of a hog farm, okay? And for example, in the R F district, if you have a ten thousand hog hog farm, and if you follow commonly accepted agricultural practices, G A A Ps, I think they're called, you might have a ten thousand hog hog farm next to you. It'd be related to the zoning ordinance, and might certainly be a problem. That's one that we, for example, as a county, would have no control over. And so there are a lot of things where your neighbors can be certainly interferable. And part of the process here is, is this something that if it's done on any scale, do we put in rules that will make it a, I'll say, palatable, okay? And limited use, so it is not something that is the ten thousand hog hog farm situation, which by really cannot control with the county.
I put a word in here, I can't hear what you're saying. I don't hear very well, everybody's talking too long, but it's like Mr. Cisco said, we have a law, it is zoning agriculture. If I open a bar on my corner and say, "I'm only gonna serve ten people a day," can I do that without a permit? Is that, "Oh, that's all right, go ahead, if you're only gonna serve ten people a day." What difference is it?
That'd be commercial.
The law is the law, that would be commercial. This is not below me, it's the same thing. They charge money for it, they say they do, they advertise it on the internet, "Help us pay our lawyer, pay, we're gonna charge you so much," da, 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 da. And say this is not commercial, that's, that's, that's don't hold water. And our zoning law says that our area is zoning agriculture. That is not agriculture.
Commercial is a reason for the charity party involved, so somebody outside has to have some connection.
This charitable stuff is blown the old soul.
If money changes hands, is it commercial?
Not necessarily.
Well, if the Methodist, no, if the Methodist church is involved in running it, then that's the Methodist church to deal with, it's not, that's why the charity's involved. For example, you've gone to a church supper, I would think, once or twice in your life, okay? And you've probably made a donation of five or eight or ten dollars for the church supper. Would that run afoul of the county zoning ordinance if it was a church way out in the middle of Sage Township? The answer is, I don't think we'd be regulating that as a commercial activity because of the charity nature of it.
Does the church hold a tactics implications?
Not always.
Actually, churches, for different reasons, don't really have...
Becoming of different laws altogether.
Different situation now. But some do, some don't. Some have what they call blanket exemptions. If you're a Methodist church, you have a blanket exemption for your whole diocese or whatever they call it.
Our ordinance does not deal with collecting fees or charging or anything of that nature, but it does. And you use the word go-kart, go-karts does appear in our zoning ordinance.
I think that was just for an example.
I understand, you both use it, and it shows up in our ordinance. After Doug said it did not show up in our ordinance. Actually, mud logging showed up in our ordinance as well. And it is allowed in some zoning, in some districts. Now, I don't think there's much question, well, now this is a commercial operation. Because it's been, it even shows up on their website that they charge for to help pay their legal costs. That definitely makes it commercial. Am I correct?
No.
I think so. Further, we got a new letter in our packet from another one of the property owners who points out some of the same facts. In chapter seven, special news permits, the last sentence of the first paragraph, says, "However, because of their unique characteristics or more intensive nature, these uses require..." special consideration, require special consideration of the welfare of adjacent properties."
Certainly, certainly.
Goes on to say, "The purpose of taking a special use is to allow practical latitude for a property owner or developer to use a parcel of land while maintaining protection, health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of neighbors."
I agree.
We've got four letters here from four neighbors who are strongly opposed to this thing.
Because it wasn't regulated in the past, this is an opportunity.
How do we know that? Who's gonna regulate it?
You're not, how, how do we know that you're gonna go home and drive fifty-five on the way home?
And I might get a ticket.
I don't care, how do I know you're gonna drive fifty-five?
You don't.
There you go.
Please do, but who's gonna regulate their situation?
The same situation there, there's regulatory agencies. If the neighbors don't like it, they call in, and then someone goes out.
It comes back to, it comes back to Justin.
Yes, sir?
Kelly Miller, landowner, just kind of add to the conversation. Act one-ten of the Enabling Act, legal nonconforming use. I don't know if any of you guys are familiar with that, I hope you would be. This has been going on since before zoning was implied, so still should fall under the legal nonconforming use of the enabling act. Now, with that being said, we are basically entering a contract with you guys with this special use permit to put regulations on this, where before you couldn't, there was nothing that could be done. This is an opportunity that we're saying okay to, for there to be some stipulations, some guidelines, so that there can be some sort of punishment if it gets over with.
I'm not necessarily going to agree with Mr. Miller as to whether or not there's what's called a legal nonconforming issue, or situation. I will indicate it's an issue that the judge may end up having to consider. And I've been a lawyer long enough to know that I never have been able to a hundred percent predict what a judge does. And so Mr. Miller, or Mr. Gilbert and I can debate quite a bit about legal nonconforming and this and that, but it is an issue that I know is raised in the, in the litigation that's going on, and it's not one that I have the ability to tell you what the judge will do on it. And so Mr. Miller's comment is, is one that I think is a fair comment.
It's a fair comment, and I tried to avoid getting to what happens after you make your decision. Your decision should be made on your own conscience, and conscience, and how you feel about it, and what you think best serves the county. If you turn it down, the lawsuit will continue, and the judge could do a number of things. What I anticipate is, he will come back and set some type of parameters on it, just like you're considering now. The only difference is, you've got seven people making a decision for the county, and it's not appealable, or if the judge makes a decision and somebody's not happy, then that becomes appealable. And at the end of the day, it's possible that the Millers may not be able to do anything on their property, or they might be able to do whatever they please. My view on it from a, kind of a practical standpoint, this is an opportunity for the county to start establishing some precedent. If you do this and you don't like it, the next time something like this comes up, you say, "That didn't work over there." If you do this and it works, and the next time it comes up, you say, "Hey, we had this once, or something similar to it, we did this, let's tweak it." You know, I, I would refrain, if I were in your shoes, from making a decision based on what the judge is gonna do if you don't. Because, you know, the landowners, adjacent areas, well, we can, but how much can we? That, that's basically what we're at, because they can run the mud bogs, it's just what depends on event, and how are you gonna control the event?
Marshall, what'd you have in array of noise?
Uh, I'm seeing my notes, uh, decimal, uh, one of the letters here, you don't have mufflers on your mufflers, and the noise, I guess, is really deafening type of thing.
Hence the berms. That's what they were putting the berms up for, was to deflect the noise, and...
Yeah, that's what they had said, but the noise still was very loud.
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, there's no way to say it's not gonna be noisy. Is noise regulated? But that should be one of your considerations, because that's the impact on the neighbor.
From, from my experience within the city of Glendale, where we have some noise regulation, the measurement of noise in a scientific fashion is a challenge, especially in an open air kind of situation.
That tends to be more subjective to the individual than objective, because I don't know, I've never really seen anything other than OSHA where they start putting noise levels in for ear protection.
But we, Mr., you're supervising Glendale, how to know how the noise is a difficult area to measure, because there are different, yeah, there are different methods of measuring different types of noise. And the open air, I think, makes it something harder to do sometimes. In a shop, it's probably easier to do.
Yeah, in a closed area, controlled environment, would be easier.
So by, by voting, let's say, everybody who didn't allow this, who didn't accept it, is there anything to prevent them from continuing on with?
Oh, they will continue on, either way, they are gonna continue on.
But that's what I'm saying, even if we said no, two of us, would it change anything? Could they, they would still have?
Until court ruled, they would be able to do whatever they want, whenever they want it. Is that gonna happen? No. Are they gonna do anything than what, more than what you're seeing in the agreement? I seriously doubt it, you know. This is just, until the courts come down, or, I guess what the court, what the court is looking at is, if the community says okay, and this parameter is acceptable to the community, he's okay with it. But if he has to make a decision, he will. And nobody can sit there and predict anything what's gonna happen. My guess would be, as the courts typically do, they split the load. They're still gonna get to do their individual thing, whatever they want. It's the judge will take it upon himself to define an event and put parameters on it, quite probably using the same guidelines that we've given. He'll put a start-stop time on it, who knows what they, he would do, the number of participants, he would probably do that. I mean, I can't say what he's gonna do, just from my experience in dealing with the courts, he's not gonna allow it to go on like some of the events in the past, but he's not gonna cut it off either. That's a guess.
Yes.
How could he sit there and say, "Oh, the judge, you can do anything you want to"? What in the hell is the zoning for?
Well, the Constitution preempts the zoning, and the zoning has to conform to the Constitution of the United States, and property rights are one of the most fundamental issues in the Constitution. So the court has to uphold the Constitution first, and if he finds that the zoning ordinances or laws don't conform to the Constitution, or deny either landowner a constitutional right, he's bound by that for the county, which they have done.
What kind of county or country do we have, people can just do as they please?
Nobody said you could do as you please.
That's just what you're saying.
No, it isn't.
Exactly.
Well, I'm not gonna debate it, that's beyond what this meeting's about.
What about the rights of the neighbors? What about their property rights?
Oh, I've suggested that they have all kinds of rights, the same, and I've, I've also suggested that you have to take into consideration the noise level, that you have to take into consideration what rights the neighbors have. And if you don't think that this conforms to that, then you vote your, your conscience. Yeah, I'm not asking you to, I'm just trying to give you information to make an informed decision. Somebody asked what happens from here, if it's turned down, Doug and I have tried to give you the best what-ifs, I guess. I mean, all I know is, at the end of the day, regardless, the Millers are gonna be able to mud bog, it's a question of how much you will win. And they agree to what these terms are, so by agreeing to them, it's like he said, it's a contract, it's a binding contract, and they're gonna live by it. Quite frankly, even if you didn't do it, and nobody else did anything past this, if they dismissed the lawsuit, I don't see the Millers doing any more than what they said they're going to live by anyhow, if they even do that. Just the reason we put some of the parameters in there is to make it flexible, without tying them down to, you can only do this once every ten years. But yes, the work the neighbors do, everybody has their own property rights, and you're correct in considering that, you should consider.
Or required to do that by the ordinance.
And that's what I'm saying, you should have followed this.
In a way, I mean, again, if I speak partly for Justin, we are trying to develop some order on what could be somewhat toward chaos.
It's a balancing act. You have to balance the rights of both property owners and the community at large, because it's not just these two people in this situation, it's any that come before you. When you set a precedent, you kinda have to live with it. So far, you haven't, as a board.
That sounds critical, it's just...
Nah, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did I make a motion that we do a roll call vote on this issue, and see if we can...
Are we in the public?
No, you gotta go back.
Move back. Any other comments, questions? Don, did you have any comments?
Not this time, Marshall.
I don't know what, you know, from the view, I thought you had some ideas.
I've got, I've got opinions, but it's not the time, I'll leave to voice them.
I'll make a motion, we'll return to the program immediately, second.
Okay, we have, all those approve say aye, all those oppose say no. We're back at two feet. Okay, um, how many would you like? Yes.
Did you get a motion that we can have a support or a phone?
Are you taking a motion to approve the request?
Well, I thought maybe we have to do a roll call vote again?
Yeah, I have, I have, we should have a motion.
Right, I was making a motion to do that.
I would like to hear what the specifics of the requests are, the timeframe, and so forth, what is that?
You still got that paper, Mr. Jacobson?
Yeah.
That was what, he read off one time. You probably heard it just in...
It would be essentially, it was on this page, and supplemented by an August twenty-eighth letter that outlined additional...
Go over to Kennedy, want us to give the highlights.
Okay. Activities combined, confined to landowners' built property, hours of operation, ten a.m. to dusk, as defined by the DNR. And that would be nine events in a twenty-four month period, maximum vehicles on site, no more than seven hundred. Events are non-commercial, which would mean that they are within identifiable, recognized, tax exempt organizations such as drill scouts, Methodist trips, shelter house, et cetera, and with an accounting of any revenue and expenses to that organization, and it stops things such as, we just help somebody out. No camping on the property, active sanitation, if there's any, technically a license for a campground, it'd be totally separate, between the planning commission and also the state is involved in those. Scheduling events of at least thirty days in advance, the zoning office, landowners agree, the application be made for no parking on the roads, the roads commission mentioned the side staff, however, the landlord is responsible for retaining posted signs for that purpose. Shielding the northwest of the neighborhood, which would be the folks here by plantings. If they'd rather have a burm, I think the Millers would do a burm, but at some point at the start, indicated they didn't want more berms. There would be inspection by the zoning official as needs. This deal with large steel activities, it would not govern, if we had no more than ten mud bogged vehicles, except those that they personally own, on the premise of any time, you know, commercial activities involved in mud bogged vehicles. And so there would never be more than ten, I guess I'll call them outsiders on the property, so you wouldn't have a median event of thirty, for example. And those were supplements to what was in the application. Justin, is there anything else?
I believe that's it. Thanks.
I'm gonna do it back, be Justin.
Yeah, I make a motion to do a roll call, re-vote again?
All those say aye?
Aye.
All opposed to vote?
Aye.
Who supported it? Like this? Not first, I think, supported by fairness. Okay, France, you vote?
My vote?
Yes.
No.
No. Don?
We're voting on the question now?
Yes.
Yeah.
And what?
On, on the request.
On the question of special permit.
Okay, and now can I give a little speech?
Yes.
Okay. I believe that, with all the facts, that I've watched this from outside, of course, up until this point in time, and as a strong property rights person, fundamentally, I believe you have the right to do whatever you want on your own property, so long as what you do doesn't in any way infringe, or erode, or your neighbor's property, and that seems to be the fundamental issue. I have heard the stories, I've gotten feedback from lots of the residents in Glavant Township, and most of them, I understand why they would call it a nuisance because of what was going on. And I have video film that was provided to me by neighbors. So I've looked at it, and I'm, I'm doing a hundred percent intellectually objective on how I feel about it. And what it comes down to is this, they're, they're going to continue to do the mud bogging anyway, therefore, why not look at where, in this case, never, nobody's gonna be happy, because I think that what we're about to do has got to be looked at, is it best for most people to regulate what's going on, and, and have some oversight, so that should there be another issue, like the film that I've got of a young man, where they've got both ridge road blocked on both sides, where you couldn't barely get a car through, and the young man is relieving himself in the road, in front of a twelve-year-old girl and her mother. I had the film, that's offensive as heck, guys, but I know that Kelly has assured me that that was an ad hoc circumstance, that, that he is going to do what, everything necessary to prevent that type of, of thing to recur again in the future, and that the vehicles will be parked on their own property, they'll put up sound barriers, et cetera. And I, I don't see that there's any perfect solution, but at this point, I think that, that it might be in the best interest of everybody concerned, that we permit this special use permit now, but make certain that we oversee everything that's going on, make certain that the neighbors that are being, where their rights are being eroded, are protected. That's as close as I can see we can come to a solution that, that people could understand, maybe not agree with totally, but so it's all of I on authorizing the permit. I was gonna make an amendment motion to, on the timeline, you got two years on there, I was thinking one year would probably have been funny to, to have made certain that it's gonna go like it's supposed to go. In other words, if they're able to comply with the outline that you've put together, then maybe it won't be as much of a problem for the, the senior citizen neighbors that I know of that are being bothered by this.
Hey, Don, so that, that had nothing to do with that time on the special use. Okay. That was how many bogs they could have in a two-year period. Okay. All right, so it's nine, you're setting on nine, correct? Right, that's, yeah. So that's approximately, yeah, four, four to five per year? Especially a per use permit, it's only as good as long as they conform to it. But that's... Yeah, not two year, you know, that's got to do with that.
So that's, if that helps put it in perspective, that's, that's, I believe at this point... So that's, if that helps put it in perspective, that's, I believe at this point, maybe the best way to resolve the issue. And if they don't live up to it, then like as Justin says, it's solvable there too.
We have one, yes.
Okay, yes. I think--
Yes, good conditions.
I will concur with Mr. Burge also. I'd rather have it regulated than not, so I will also vote yes.
I agree, yes.
Mr. Christie?
Well, we say everyone makes statements that if we don't pass this, they're going to go ahead and do it anyway. If we do pass it, and they violate it, what's to say that they don't go ahead and do it anyway? What has changed?
My understanding is a binding contract.
I believe, unless I'm wrong, Mr. Chicks, that's a whole other ballgame.
Well, I think the way Mr. Miller put it is by asking for the special use permit and accepting the benefits of it, they've accepted the fact that they are subject to this regulation.
So if it violates it, what's to stop them from still having mud bog?
Because they have accepted the fact that the regulations are what govern.
Okay, who's going to stop them from having a mud bog?
All things have enforcement mechanisms. And one thing that a good lawyer, who is on the prosecutor's side, you don't exactly tell people exactly what you're going to do, which could eventually be back in front of either the circuit judge or the district court judge potentially on a criminal matter. We don't like to do criminal matters, but potentially we could do it probably to the district court on a criminal--
From my perspective as a defense attorney, I would rather not have any ordinance, because then you have no key. This such parameters, that's my perspective. This has parameters, and like Mr. Jacobson said, that you've got parameters you can go in with. God's right to take it into district court and ask for a cease and desist on that act going all the way around the period, and he would probably get it. So by agreeing to it, Mr. Miller, I think is giving up more rights than what the county is giving. I don't know if I said that right. But I would rather not have any ordinance, because then there's nothing to enforce, and I don't have to defend it. Did I answer the question, what you were asking?
Yeah. Not sure I agree with you, but--
Well, I--
On the same token, we have a problem in the whole United States with marijuana. Over 50% of the people in the country would like to see it legalized. But right now, it's against the law. But we can't control it. So if we can't control it, why not make a law to legalize it? That's about what we're doing here. So my statement is, I'm going to vote no.
No. So it's people for three. I don't know.
I vote no. You want? One, two, three, four no's.
Do you vote no?
I vote no.
I cannot agree with the stipulations that were presented, that's way, way too lenient.
Marcia, you have a question?
Yes, we have, the head judge declined. Do you have the old business? Your old business? Do you have the new business? Marcia, the office? Do you have a nomination for chair?
I'll nominate Marcia.
I'm going to nominate for chair. And I'm unanimous, for casual Marcia.
Well, they've got the other nomination.
Please, any nominations for chair?
I nominate Mr. Bassett. I feel excited.
Thank you for the vote back, finally. So we have a vote for the board, and we will be-- Okay. All those in favor for Mike, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor for Marcia, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
I'm voting for both.
Okay, let's--
Don didn't vote for either one.
I understand.
No.
The kid--
How many votes for Mike?
I-- Do I vote for myself?
Sure, please.
Okay, I'll vote for you. What, I was supposed to say no?
Yes. And then how many votes for Marcia?
Well, you can't vote twice.
Hey, you can't vote once.
You can't vote twice.
Okay. Mike, you're it. Oh, thank you, Mike. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your confidence, but I'd like to report--
I was going to go vice chair for him.
That's true.
He goes for him.
Thank you. Now a vice chair. We need a vice chair.
Unless Mr. Christie wants to be the chair.
Yes, Mr. Christie. Nomination for Mr. Christie?
I don't know if we can, I'll private things.
Need a chair, can he be vice chair? I don't--
I have a little reason he can't be.
Okay, okay. Mr. Christie?
What?
You accept it? Every vote for you?
You want a vice chair?
Yes. Thank you, okay. All those in favor for Mr. Christie?
Aye.
All those opposed? One for everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
You got eight votes?
Yes. And secretary? You can be secretary, you're already--
I nominate Marcia for secretary.
I won't be here.
Somebody else put it while you're gone. Somebody else put it while you're gone.
Okay.
Support.
Those? Okay, all those approved, he is a secretary?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Can you back up one second? Who nominated Dick for vice chair, please? Mike?
Now, you notice that Commissioner Burge is a good politician. He'll vote both the way--
That's the definition.
Those will take with that next month, okay? No need to-- No, not until May, unless something comes up, okay?
Can you vote for him? He'll be back by May.
That's true. Any other-- We have the National Journal, and save that.
All right.